School district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. Would you rise with me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions or changes to the agenda?
Yes, there is, sir. We've added one additional purchase order for the playground equipment. We had the playground furniture on there, but we've now gotten a second quote for our playground equipment for the preschool. And that will be added here.
Do you have a specific number? Not yet.
It is... I'm trying to think what to do. It's the 2025-05-194A.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept the agenda as amended?
Someone second?
Oh my goodness.
Is there any discussion? Would you call the roll, please?
Dr. Beers.
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman-Wall?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Okay, we have a number of presentations. Rich, are you starting off on these?
Sure. The first presentation tonight will be made by Ms. Carrie Morgano, and it relates to our NEATEC math competition entries.
Hi, I'm here again to celebrate some of our students for their outstanding math achievements in the latest round of the NOETIC Learning Math Contest. For the spring round, there were almost 41,000 students around the country who competed against one another from grades two to eight, and we have our grade level team winners here tonight, as well as some of our top 10 presenters. In eighth grade, so when I call the students' names, if you can come forward, and I'm going to ask you to stand right in front of the table. So in eighth grade, we had a three-way tie. We're here to celebrate. Charles Allen, if you're here, come on up. Robert Meyer, come on up. Morgan Damaski, I think, is not here today, but we're celebrating her as well. Seventh grader Kaz Sutherd. Sixth grader James Davis. Fifth grader Samuel Horgan. Fourth grader Colm Dugan. Third grader Ella Branch. And second grader Ford Clark, come on up. You all showed tremendous effort once again in this competition, solving creative and kind of outside-of-the-box-thinking math questions. We are so proud of you. Let's give our grade level team winners a round of applause, please. And then I'm also going to ask Ella Branch and Colm Dugan to step forward, a big giant step forward, and I'm going to have four other students join them in this new row. I have third graders Lucas Oaklander and Eddie Vash, come on up. And fourth graders Alexander Bokus and Alexander Cullis. These students here achieved what is NOETIC's highest accomplishment. It is the National Honor Roll, and it is because they scored in the top 10% for their grade level. It's outstanding work, and we are proud of you. Let's give our top 10 presenters a round of applause. I do have a little funny story. Before we take pictures, I have a little story, and then I have certificates to hand out. Do any of you remember which grade level it was that I was joking around with on our results day about the acronym NOETIC? Does anybody remember that? Eddie, was it third grade? Okay. So, on the spot, one of the kids asked me one day, "What does NOETIC stand for?" And I didn't know. So... I'm very much focused on the questions, the math questions. So I didn't know, and we were joking around and coming up with silly little, you know, words that it could stand for, and we were having just, you know, a funny time before all of the kids were able to get into the classroom. And so since then, I looked it up. It's not an acronym at all. It is actually an adjective. Do any of you guys know what it means? Does anybody in the audience know what NOETIC means? Laura Murray? Okay, so the word, I just thought it was fascinating. The word NOETIC comes from the Greek word "noesis" or "noeticos." It means inner wisdom, direct knowing, intuition, or implicit understanding. NOETIC refers to ways of knowing beyond our traditional five senses. So it means really smart. So a big congratulations to all of you. I'm going to come over with some certificates, and then if anyone would like to take some pictures, we can do that.
We're going to do one group picture first with the board, and then we'll have to do the certificates.
Maybe our younger students can step forward while you guys slide over.
Well, I too thought it was an acronym, but I looked it up a long time ago, a few weeks back, but I didn't want to be a spoiler tonight, so... Anyway, true to my word, those of you who are here for the NOETIC math recognition, if you and your family want to leave at this point, you may, or you may stay in this swelchingly hot room. Whatever your preference is. Our next presentation, however, is going to be done by Mr. Jason Branch and Mrs. Taylor DeSapri, and this is to recognize our, let's see, it's our OMEA students.
Hello, everybody.
That is an acronym, by the way. It's Ohio Music Educators Association.
It is an acronym.
I do know that one.
Yes.
Good.
We're here to celebrate and recognize the accomplishments of some of our middle school students. We had 30 West G Middle School students participate in OMEA Middle School Solo and Ensemble Competition, where they prepare an ensemble of like a duet, trio, or quartet, or a solo, and they play for a judge and receive a rating based on their performance and the quality of their performance. Out of the 30 students that we had participate, they were spread out among 17 different events. Eleven of those events got the highest rating of a one, five of those events got the second highest rating of a two, and one of our events got the third highest rating of a three. And having 30 students participate at the middle school level just reminds us of like pre-COVID participation, and it's a really, really heartwarming thing that so many students are interested in participating, and that they do so well, and they're so motivated and excited. So we invited those 30 students here to tonight's meeting, just to be recognized for their accomplishments, and hopefully get a nice photo op with the board as well. So could we have the... It's not the joke I made at the last meeting. Could we have the solo and ensemble participants come up to the front? And can we get a big round of applause for all of these solo and ensemble participants?
And again, the same offer stands. At this point in time, we'd like to recognize some of our students who've been involved in the GEAR 4H Club. These are students who have been some of our most outstanding students in terms of science and science performance, and there are two people who are largely responsible for that in addition to our own science staff. Those are Dr. and Dr. LaFavor. And I'm going to ask Megan Bellin if she will introduce them at this time. Thank you.
I have the pleasure to introduce two advisors who have done some absolutely tremendous things for our students outside of the school day, and they are going to win awards all around from a national perspective, and so we wanted to make sure that we had an opportunity to thank the people that have accomplished this, as well as our students who have earned these recognitions. So do you mind coming up and talking about our students? And all of our students, can you come on up, and we'll have you? Perfect.
Want to stand in the front that way? Okay.
I'm Jeff LaFavor, one of the advisors of the GEAR 4H Club. This year, we went to, I didn't know I was going to give a presentation, sorry.
I have jokes.
Okay. We went to the National Robotics Challenge, as we have done quite a few years in the past, beginning in 2016. We entered in, we had 13, no, we had 14 students, because I can't forget Michael. He was in a special category. We had 13 students in the regular challenge, and then there's a new challenge, which I forgot what the name is, but it's for, it's school science projects. They wanted to bring in a different category of science projects, and so Michael Jaeger was brought in for that. The three contests that we participated in were the Micromouse Contest. It's a maze contest where the robot has to solve a maze that is unknown to the robot. You put the robot down, and it doesn't know ahead of time what the solution to the maze is. It has to figure its way to the middle. The other contest that we participated in was the Rescue Robot Contest in the Middle School Division. We had three robots entered in that contest. And then the other contest that we entered was the Robot Maze Contest. We had, in the high school division, we had four girls in one team. So let's see if I can remember everybody's name. Remember, I'm a senior now, so trying to remember these kinds of things. So Matt, over here is Mandy Potonic and Jana Winningham. We're on the high school team. In the Rescue Robot, we have Sam Girasi here and Robert Meyer, and then we have Michael Jaeger for... Oh, where's Charlie?
He's right up there.
Come on, Charlie, get high. Okay, sorry. I just missed you, Charlie, sorry. And Charlie, Charlie was, Charlie and Sam were on one of the Rescue Robot teams, and by the way, they won a nomination for the Honda Innovation Award for their innovative ball-picking-up device. That's, the Honda Innovation Award's the highest award given at the National Robotics Challenge, and each contest, there's 13 contests, and each contest gets a nomination for that contest. So they got, for the Rescue Robot, they were nominated for the Honda Innovation Award. We had, we have, who are not here, Colette Johnson and Ginny Goodall were in the Rescue Robot. They won first place in the middle school division. And, let's see, what, oh, and I should, and Jacob Needing and...
Caleb.
Caleb, right. Were, they were the other robot, the Rescue Robot entry.
A lot of our members are graduating eighth grade today, so that's why some of them are missing, or their siblings are.
So we're really, we're really proud of all of our members who participated in the National Robotics Challenge. It's a lot of work. They started in, working on their project in October, and put many hours in toward that goal. Some did better than others, but sometimes there's a little element of luck in these contests, and some of our members didn't have a whole lot of luck. For example, Jacob and Caleb, their robot motor failed the week before the contest, and we had to figure out why it stopped running. And after tearing it apart, we found there was a bad bearing. It had frozen in the motor and causing it not to be able to spin. Then the night before the contest, their sensors failed, and you can't make it through a maze without sensors. You have to have sensors or else you're going nowhere. And so we tried to get that fixed, thought we had it fixed that night. When we got to the contest and tried it out, the sensors weren't working again. So they had less than an hour till the contest started, and they were frantically working. It was kind of a frantic situation. They were trying to get the sensors to work, and they did manage to get some of them to work again, and then had to reprogram it the last minute, and made one small mistake in programming. And of course, if you know anything about programming, you can't make any mistakes. Any mistake is really bad news. And by mistake, they programmed in a left turn where it should have been a right turn. And if that hadn't happened, they probably, I think they probably would have won first place in that contest, but that one little mistake really went against them. But anybody who does programming knows you shouldn't really try to program under pressure. But, you know, in this case, you know, you didn't have much choice. You had to program under pressure, but they did a great job anyhow, and put a lot of effort into that, and so I'm very proud of their effort as well. Thank you very much.
I'd like to note that belonging to GEAR is almost like having another class after school. The members, some of them come two times a week for two, three hours at a time, starting from October. A lot of them work all through Christmas, so it is a huge effort, and we're really hoping that it will pay off in the long run for them.
If you guys want to get up closer, feel free. Again, the offer stands. Anyone wishing to leave at this point may. At this time, Mrs. Lisa Zimmer is going to talk to us about the Platinum Pen Award.
So I'm so proud of Cora Duxbury. At a regional Power of the Pen Competition, her story to have finally moved away from the beach won best of round. This means of the 84 entries written in the Lake Erie region, the director found Cora's story to be the best. Then, the director read all of the first-place stories in that round all across Ohio in all regions. With just under 1,000 students who had participated in this prompt, Cora's story was found to be the best of the best. On Thursday, Cora will be recognized and awarded the Platinum Pen Award at the state Power of the Pen Competition. Congratulations, Cora. Cora also took first place out of all eighth-grade students at a regional competition, along with Colette Johnson, who was... Oh, seventh, sorry, all these kids graduating in seventh grade. And Colette Johnson, who isn't here, also will be moving forward at 17th spot, and Slane Sinnet came in at second place. So again, congratulations, Cora. Well done.
Well, tonight, we have an unprecedented 23 retirements. It's an amazing number. I think it's because I'm leaving this year. Probably everybody's heading out. It's my theory, anyway. Dr. Ben Nkasa might have another one. Anyway, I'd like to recognize these people tonight, and to make it easy and to make it sort of fast, except for you, Joe, I don't know how you're going to navigate this. We'll make exceptions, we'll make exceptions for you, but I'm going to ask that when I call your name, that you come up, you can come past me, and Dr. Ben Nkasa will give you your Apple Award, and then I'd ask that you just walk behind the board members, or behind the board chairs, and go and shake the hands of each of the board members. Otherwise, it's sort of a mess when we get everybody out here. So if you go that way and circle around where Karen is standing, I think we should be all set. There's going to be one group picture at the end. Come on, you know, we're not doing the individual ones, but we'll line you up and we'll get a group picture, okay? Our first award, our first recognition night, our first retiree goes to Mary Beth Alley with 27 years of service. With our kindergartners, right?
Yes.
Wow. That's a trooper. Next is Ernie Cavasini. Ernie has 30 years of service. Is Ernie here tonight? I don't see him. I didn't see him coming in. Next would be Maite Shonay Zaller. Maite, got it. I did. The hyphenated last name threw me, because I always knew it was Maite Zaller, so I had to practice that one. Maite also has 30 years of service. As a bus driver. Wow. I wouldn't make it a year. Next is Nancy Christie with 25 years of service. Is Nancy here? Colleen Clucus with 21 years of service. I don't know that Colleen's here. Haven't seen her. She's probably with her grandkids. Greg Dennisack, I don't believe is here tonight, but Greg also is being recognized with 18 years of service. Carrie Egnott with 25 years of service. Is Carrie here? Well, that's okay. Cindy Krakowski with 20 years of service. Is Cindy here? There she is. Cindy also works in transportation, so I have a great deal of admiration for you folks, believe me. Next is Debbie Lockman with 28 years of service in the district. Ali Ludman, I know is here tonight with 21 years of service. Not sure if Rick Looby is here tonight or not, but Rick has 18 years of service with the district. Holly Mahew has 17 years of service with the district. Joe Marino, special accommodations here for you, 32 years of service with the district. I don't know, are you going to make him go around? He can do it. I did not see Michael Mike's. He has 32 years of service with the district. Is Mike here tonight? Joseph Murray, 25 years of service. Tully has someone here as a fan club. We usually don't have that happen much, except for graduation, but, you know. Child in every group. Sue Rashar, leaving central office with 15 years of service. I did not see Steve Sterrett, but Steve is leaving us after 22 years of service. Richard Stopek, 30 years of service. Marilyn Sukes, 20 years. Michelle Thompson, 31. Kathy Todd, 30 years of service. You think you're seeing doubles, because there are twins here, too. Just saying. Kim Zanetti, 17 years of service. I did not see Kim. I don't know if she's here tonight or not. And then someone who needs no introduction, because she's already been up here tonight, Lisa Zimmer is leaving us after 32 years of service. All right, now you guys are not ready to leave yet until you get your group picture. Then after that, you and your families are free to leave if you so choose, okay? Thank you for all the service you've given to our kids. I'll tell you, you'll never know the impact you've had on kids' lives for many years after your retirement, because it's amazing what they come back and tell you years later, and sometimes it's the things that we do that they don't even, they don't resonate with us when we do them, because we think that it's just part of our job, and sometimes some of the most... And sometimes, some of the most special contacts you've had with kids over the years are the ones that they remember. And they're not necessarily what you taught them in your lessons, or the things you've said to them, and the way you've treated them. So thank you for how well you've treated our kids throughout your years at West Jaga.
I'm now.
Oh, my goodness. There's Karen's five-year forecast. There's Karen's five-year forecast. No more recognition. I mean, there's a lot of people. We're hiring a ton of people tonight. We're hiring, like, a lot of teachers and a lot of administrators. So I don't know. I mean, there may be public participation, but I don't... I'm not aware of any. The only person that I thought might come is the one who's the mother of the custodian, but I don't see her. And she can't speak anyway, because she's not a resident, so I can't tackle her.
Boy Scouts or something?
Okay. Our next item is the five-year forecast. Now comes the most exciting part of the meeting.
It's only exciting when you don't have money. That's right. All right, so we're going to go through the five-year forecast. As part of the five-year forecast, we do the primary forecast in November, and then we do an update in May, as required by law. So this, before we get to the numbers now, the forecast has a lot of assumptions in it this year, because we are going through the biennial budget, and we don't know all the implications of that, so we're going to have a lot of assumptions. On our... In the package you have, you have the financials. You also have all the assumptions. There's like a 20-page document that goes with that, with all the assumptions. So if you have some light reading tonight, you want to go back, it's all there. So if we look at this, this is a moment in time, and again, as we go along, we update this forecast all the time, so we're looking at that along the way. And we have a little technical glitch, so we're kind of doing a split screen here, looking at things. So when we look at the forecast, we break it up into a couple of things. We do revenues and expenditures, what you typically would see, and then we have what's left in cash. It's kind of the three parts that we like to look at in the forecast. When we look at the budget, the budget, as we know, is going on right now. So there's a couple of things that will impact our forecast, that we're making assumptions on. So the first one is public school funding. Right now, public schools are estimated to get about $103 million, but we're seeing a shift in the state to vouchers, and those are getting approximately $448 million for over the next two years. So we're seeing that shift from public schools to the voucher program for what is in the House bill. So this is what's in the House bill now. Now, certainly, the governor has put his budget together, the House has put their budget together, and then we're waiting on the Senate as well. We expect that at the end of May. There are 14 proposed laws that are impacting property tax reform. As we know, we went through the 2023 revaluation, where everyone's value of their house went up 32%. Amazing. However, your taxes went up as well, so not so amazing. So they're trying to deal with that. So they've had a joint commission, a task force that's working on property tax, and that has been working with the House to develop a lot of, you know, kind of ideas about how to mitigate that increase as we see property taxes go up according to inflation. We don't see at this point that slowing right now. Particularly in our district, we don't have a lot of development going on, so we're still seeing a very robust real estate market. We're estimated in the triennial update, we're estimating about an 8.66% increase in our property tax valuations. House Bill 96, which is what the budget bill is, has some concerns for us, has some things that we need to watch. The first is to eliminate the fair school funding plan. The... What they're seeing, we have a fair school funding plan that was put in four years ago. We've implemented it the first four years, but it was a six-year implementation. So we've implemented 2/3 of it, but in the House budget, we don't have that last two years implemented. So that's creating a little stress on some of the other districts. We're on the guarantee. We're hoping that that guarantee stays in place, but we are seeing, out of the House budget, reductions of 5% this year and 10% reductions going along for next year. There are some increases in some other costs, but that's what we're seeing. In addition to that, we have a 30% limit they want to have in carryover cash. Now, we have in excess of that. We've had, over the years, we've been able to accumulate some cash for long-term projects, but in the budget, they're asking for 30% over the prior year. Now, over 400 schools out of 600 schools have more than 30%. So it's... We're not unusual. We're not the most, but we are seeing this restriction. So currently, it looks like the Senate is not on board with a 30%, so they're kind of talking through what they're going to be doing in changing that. So we do see... Expect that to go up a bit. Or we expect it to go up or hopefully go away, but we'll see. It also empowers the Budget Commission of the county to suspend voter-approved levies and disregard the 20-mil floor. Currently, we're at 20.003. We're not on the 20-mil floor. In 2000, in our 2023 revaluation, we fell below the 20-mil floor, which was the minimum that school districts or residents need to fund schools. This year, we were not. We're at 20.03. As we look at that, if they suspend that or they drop that down, we would not see increases as the valuations go up. We would see that stabilize and kind of, you know, go down, and the mileage would adjust and things like that. But... So we're watching that very closely. If we... If the budget goes through with the House bill, if we were over the 30%, then the tax commission would have the ability to come in and reduce our taxes, without regard for what this board has decided to do with the financials of the school district. So those are a couple of things that we're watching and monitoring in the House bill. And then the last one would be, I mean, we're looking at... We're not the only school. This is all public schools that are having to deal with this. So there's a few things that we're dealing in the forecast that are reacting to some of those issues that are in the budget.
Karen?
Yes?
What you just said, it's not what this board has decided, it's what's been voted on, correct?
Right.
So it's not our...
It's not what you've decided.
It's what the community has voted.
Right. So...
They could take away.
Right, they could take away. In all of our levies, if we look at our levies, we have long-term levies in place, they're continuing levies, and we have two emergency levies that we've had in place since 20 years ago. So we've been renewing those over a period of time. So we have two of those that we're looking at and deciding what to do with as we go forward when they come up for renewal. On the Senate side, they're now in deliberations. We've had a lot of testimony. We've had a lot of people writing to the Senate to talk about some of the implications we have on public schools, and what the impact would be financially for public schools. So we'll wait and see what happens, but it's unknown at this time. We don't know what's going to go forward. The Senate actually has five pieces of pending legislation that was dealing with property tax reform. So everyone is, you know, very focused on the impact and the increase, because we had 32% increase in our district. Other counties had 40%, some had 30, you know, so it just... It was a very large increase, and people are looking at that and seeing what kind of relief they can give taxpayers. We're not going to finalize this budget process until the end of June. Hopefully, by the end of June. But we're going to have to file this forecast by the end of May. So we're... What do we know? A forecast is what do we know at this time? And that's how we're forecasting. So it could change, and we have the ability to change it after that if something is impacting us. And we can do that, again, either in August, we would have to make it if we have major adjustments, or we can wait until November and change that again. So this, again, is a cyclical thing. We can do the adjustments at any time. I got a click here, I'm sorry. All right, so we've looked at the budget timeline. Like I said, we're going to file this here in May. The budget's going to be after that, so we'll see. And again, we won't probably get some of the... After they file it and do this budget, we won't know what the implications are probably until October or November. By the time they write the law, figure out what they wrote, and then what the implications are for the forecast, and what the implications are for the formula. So those are all kind of nuanced for us. When we look at this overview of the forecast, we have a 2.35 emergency levy that we collect in 2024. It was suspended for one year, so that's now coming back onto our forecast. The revenues are growing at 1.83%. Our expenditures, unfortunately, are growing at 5.7%, so we're seeing that increase in inflation, just like you're seeing at home, food prices, supplies, all that stuff. We're seeing that again as well. And then we also have our increases in our salaries and benefits. State payments accounted for 24% of the district's revenues. We have two contracts, union contracts, those have both been settled, and those have 3.3% raises in them for next year. We are looking at... This board, when we were looking at the whole master facility plan, they put aside $10 million, or voted to put aside $10 million for middle school renovations, because this building, no matter what happened in the master facility plan, this building was going to stay. We funded part of that last year, and we're funding the rest of that this year. So that's about a $6 million increase, and that's taking care of roofs, windows, we're taking care of generators, things like that, that are all infrastructure, so you won't see anything glitzy and pretty, but it'll all be safe, warm, and dry. That's our goal. We're anticipating our cash balances to be positive through 2029, and again, we'll wait for the Joint Tax Commission to tell us the impact on the 20-mil floor. That's really one thing that will really affect us on the 20-mil floor. All right, key revenue assumptions. If we look at our revenue here, the big thing is our property taxes. And that's... We spend 70-something percent is locally funded. Our property taxes, as you'll notice, in fiscal year, it's 24. You look at the top, and then it goes to 25. That's that $2.35 million levy that was suspended coming back on to the books. You'll see it also increase in 2027. This is that proposed increase in our valuation. So as we have a revaluation in 2026 of an 8.66%, we may fall below that 20-mil floor and have an increase. Now, it won't be 8%, you know, it won't be 8%. You're not seeing 8% there, but it'll generate additional revenue. And then you see it decline in '28 and '29. That's because of the emergency levies. We don't show them in this line item in the forecast. We show them down here. We just have to take them out of that line item, so you'll see that go down. And that's the 3.7 mil emergency levy. We have a second one that expires in tax year 2030. So those, we're looking at, we've talked about what to do with those levies, and to roll those into different types of levies, not emergency levies, but a substitute levy. That would make it a continuing levy and pick up a little bit of revenue on there as new construction comes on. We don't pick up a lot in new construction, so it wouldn't be a lot. It would continue pretty flat. But we need those levies, because they represent 16% of our total funding.
And by doing that, we keep the homestead credit.
Yes, so by taking it and putting it in as emergency, you know, from an emergency levy to a substitute levy, it really... You don't have to ask taxpayers, you don't have that continual five-year, 10-year renewal, but you will keep that homestead and rollback, which is 12.5% to the taxpayers. So the local taxpayers, the state reimburses the school district for it, but you get a reduction on all of your taxes. So all of our levies that we have in place now fall with that homestead and rollback reimbursement. Anything going forward would not. So if we had a new levy on the ballot, it would not get that same discount. Also in our revenues, you see the revenues here, 2.3, 1.8, and it goes down. We see that decline. That's really where a lot of our interest income is. We had some cash, we were able to put in some longer-term CDs, things like that, and we're going to spin that cash down by paying for some of these capital projects. So you're seeing that interest go down. We also have other tuition payments in there, things like that that are in there, but the biggest line item in there is about $1.4 million worth of interest income. Any questions on revenue before I go to... I want to keep this moving, because I know it's hot. It's warm here. This is just showing the breakdown of what happens with our cash. That's green is our cash, and you'll see that big gap, because we're going to transfer that money over to the capital projects account. And again, as we talked about, local taxes are about representing about 76% of our funding, and the rest, again, 20-something% coming from the state. So the state budget does impact us greatly, but residents certainly are paying the bulk of this, and that's because we're considered a wealthier district. So we don't get as much state funding, say, as a district that doesn't have our property valuations. State and local, this just shows the discrepancy. The red is the local funding, and then you'll see the state. And again, we're keeping the state. If you look at line item 15 here, our state, we're assuming it's flat. We're on the guarantee, and we're not increasing that hardly at all. So we're seeing that kind of stabilize for the next five years. Now, obviously, that could change as we get new information. If we look at Joga County as compared to some of the other counties, and I put Chagrin Falls in there, because they do have a component in Joga County, for those of you who live in Joga County, you'll see that we have the second lowest tax rate. That's an effective tax rate, not what you pass, but what you actually pay, and West Jaga enjoys the second, you know, the second lowest in the county. Now, Berkshire has a lower tax rate, but they have an income tax, and so I've embedded a percentage in there for the income tax as well. All right, key revenue or key expenditures. We look at our expenditures, the largest bulk, we're a service entity, is our wages. So we have two contracts, one with the teachers, one with our classified staff. We have, for the next... This is the first year of our three-year contract. We had a 3.2% pay increase plus steps. Then we have a 3.3 next year, and then a 3.5. After that, we've put in a 2.5% increase going forward, so you'll see it kind of grow a little bit and then kind of level off there. The next line item, the next largest line item, is our employee benefits, what we pay into retirement for STRS and SERS, plus our medical. And we're seeing in this, we'll anticipate a 10% increase in medical, in health insurance. Purchased services, those are seeing an increase of about 12% for next year, or for 2025. We had a number of student tuition outplacements, and then we had transportation contracts. If you recall, we implemented a transportation contract for the bus shortages, for the bus driver shortages, so that was included in there. So that was included in there. And they were budgeted for a 9% increase going forward as we go through this. And that'll be for curriculum support. We've got some additional curriculum support that we're going to use. And then technology increases as well. So we're really trying to fill out the rest of our infrastructure and technology that we have, that we kind of started in COVID, really, and building that out.
And we had talked about maybe breaking out some of those, like the sped stuff from the IT, you know what I mean, just because they're so different.
They are different and we'll, I've got those broken out by category for object code so we can follow those through next year. So you'll get a better idea of what we're spending in what categories.
Thanks.
The Auditor of State gave us a 128 new accounting manual this week. And we have to implement it by July 1st. So we're, may have a few more categories than we wanted, I don't know.
I have a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
So what are you going to do in June?
Not taking vacation. So when we look at the other ones, supplies and materials, we're seeing this just like you see at home. Supplies have gone up, materials have gone up, any type of, we have, that's where our repairs and maintenance are going as well. So we're seeing more of the repairs and maintenance as we go along this year. And then the last part is capital expenses. This is really where we start spending furniture, we buy computers, we buy, you know, anything that's kind of a over $5,000 that we kind of put in here. So that's what we're looking at that. We pay for our buses out of our permanent improvement plan fund, which as you know, that's kind of had some changes as well. So we're still going to fund those out of our permanent improvement plan. All right. When we take one example of what we're going to see, and I've got to get to this last part. We are going to, I shouldn't say we, you as a board are going to do this. For next, this year, we're going to transfer a total of $18.6 million to our capital plan. Now with the board's decision to take the holdoff on the bond and wait because of, you know, economic concerns that the board has had, we are putting money away. Again, $6 million of that money, that amount was put away for the middle school projects that you had approved in 2023, 2024. So going forward, we have another, we have other buildings. So at the high school, at Lindsay, at Westwood, we're going to continue to operate those buildings. And so we've set up another capital account, an O7O account, that will account for the, for the next 10 years, what kind of long-term projects we have, like in roofing, HVAC, other-
Windows.
Windows, doors, things like that. And we're going to show you what those are, of what we have identified. So I'm going to ask the board to approve the second group and that transfer tonight. And that will bring down our cash balance, but we're still in a good cash balance position going into our fifth year. But we're going to ask you to set that money aside. And that's just prudent financial planning from the board's standpoint. We know we're going to see them, these are repairs, we know they're coming, and we don't have a bond on the ballot right now. Okay, so we need to-
And then explain like if, if after 10 years we don't use that, we, it has to go back to the general fund. But in that 10 years, if we need to take some of that, we can move it back into general.
Correct, so let's say that we get some unforeseen expenditures and we don't have cash for this, we're going to have to move some of that money back. So we can move money back into the general fund if we haven't issued a purchase order. If we haven't issued a contract, we can move that money back. Now, these are long-term projects. These are five years down the road or, you know, three years down the road or something like that. So we'll have time to adjust to the budget. We'll have time to adjust to getting, we're now in the process of having all of our roofs analyzed and looking at those. So there's a lot of things that are going on to make that long-term capital plan, but we want to put that money away now. We have it now, we want to go ahead and do this, this work now. As we look at enrollment, we're seeing a decline in enrollment. And part of that is, you know, it's not a lot, it's just a little bit every year. So we've got to maybe have a kindergarten class that's smaller, but we have a larger graduating senior class. So we're just kind of seeing that 30 kid, you know, 25, 30 kids decline. Some years, we might have a kindergarten class that was big, you know, so it just depends. So we're seeing, forecasting a bit of a drop. Now it's not all in one class, it's not in all in one grade, it's not all in one building. So it's all kind of spread around. So it's not like you can say, okay, we, you know, we don't need this teacher or something like that. It's, so we're looking at that. So what we've worked with is as we have attrition, as we have retirements, that's when we look at personnel. And so that we're not, we're dealing with those so we don't have to do any type of large-scale RIF or something like that, that we wouldn't want to do. We want to take care of those things and be mindful of those hires. This is just showing kind of where most of our money is being spent, is in the red. That's our wages. We spend 54% in our payroll and then 20% in our benefits. So that's 74% of our, you know, of our work. All right. You can see the ending cash balance, really from that transfer, that's what's creating that drop in the cash. We are looking at GFOA, which is our Government Financial Officers Association, recommends 60 days of cash to have on hand. Don't go below that, that's like the bare minimum. Now the board has said 120 days. As we look at that, so we have to manage that. The board is, once we drop below 120 days, we, the board has to, the superintendent and treasurer have to come up with a plan on what we're going to be doing with going forward. So we certainly have worked on that as well with the finance committee. So we'll still stay above that, over the forecast, until we get to the very end of the forecast. It's funny, the state law of Ohio says you can't go below zero. Makes sense, you know? All right, that's just a guess. So as we look at this overall story, property tax evaluations are, you know, ready for 2026. We're going to see property tax evaluations go up. Property tax reform is expected as well in 2026. We're probably going to see some of that now in the biennial budget. I anticipate them doing some of that work. It's, state budget's still 25% of our work, of our, our funding. And the districts currently will stay on the guarantee. I don't see us coming off the guarantee unless they change it. And there's been some discussion on changing the guarantee and reducing it, but it's really been like reducing the amount as we go along. Long-term planning for facilities needs to be done since the bond levy was postponed. And then what we're going to look at going forward is we'll monitor the revenues and expenses. We continue to do that every year, we're very mindful of what we're spending. We'll monitor the state funding and how the property taxes are going along. And then we're going to manage the capital projects that we have in place. Because we have a lot going on this summer. Scott and Mark, who's not here tonight, are very busy. We have a roof that's going on this building. We have a new turf that's going out. We've got a lot of renovations going on and I'm hoping that it will all be done in time. The playground, the preschool, we're opening up the preschool. We ordered the furniture, well, after this, we'll order the furniture on Monday and the new playground equipment as well. So there's just a lot that they're going to be busy with. So let me do one thing here. One thing we are asking the board to look at is our, the capital plan. And this additional work that we'll be doing. This is the original. If we look at that, this was our original plan. Now we started off with certainly the water treatment plant. Now the water treatment plant has taken on a life of its own. As we know, we're seeing a lot of requirements from our EPA and where we can put the well and how we have to build the building and all the requirements that we have on there. That will be for this whole campus. That water treatment plant will be for the whole campus. So that's about 3.7 million. Roofs and repairs, like I said, we're getting those done. They're already staging over there at their bus garage. Lighting is going on at the high school, at the middle school. These are all middle school products. So this is what you approved, kind of the 10 million. Now what we did is we took out the painting, because we're going to paint the roofs. The painting is repairs and maintenance. I don't think that that's capitalized, what we should be capitalizing. So we replaced that with univents. We have a change in the univents and that's about a million one in univents that we need to have repaired. I don't know how old these are, 50s? They're old. So we're having trouble with parts and making them work efficiently. So we're hoping as we replace those, they'll work more efficiently and there'll be less cost to operate. So we're seeing those as well. So we've added those in there. In addition to, again, we talked about the maintenance building added on to the water treatment plant. We're under the, we put out the RFQ for the design, criteria design. And that'll come back and that'll come back to the board. So you have time to look at that before we make a final decision on that.
Yeah, I just wanted to make the point that we're not really approving these projects tonight. We're approving a plan and then each one will stand on its own when the time comes.
Right, so what we've approved, what the board has approved so far is the roofs, the lighting and the doors. So that's what we've already contracted out. So everything else we'll get quotes for and then you will have a time to make that decision and make the, you know, design changes or whatever we have available there. Okay? In the second part of the second O7O, another capital account, we have $11.5 million for the remaining buildings. And that is really dependent upon the roofing. We have an $8.5 million estimate for all the roofing. Now when they get done is depending on how long our roofs are working. You know, the middle school, the high school is a very large building, has a lot of roof. It has a lot of parts and pieces of the roof because it's been added on five times. There's a lot of parts that have to come together. And in '96, y'all did a lot of work to get that building up today, but it's time to redo some of that work. So we're looking at roofs, we have to replace the track. We're not doing the track this year because we're putting in the turf, we might ruin the track. So we need to fix the track next year. So that's slated for next summer. Univents in the high school, Westwood and Lindsay. So those are looking at, again, we've had problems with those in the last couple of years in getting parts and making those work. And then windows and doors, so windows at the high school, windows at Westwood, I didn't have enough money to do that Lindsay. So we're doing what we can for the next, what we feel comfortable transferring. If we come out and have savings here, then we'll readjust it. So you have a lot of flexibility in this, but we want to make sure that we've got this phase two, is what I call it, in place and set aside. So we're asking the board tonight to implement a second capital plan and then to transfer those funds over to that capital plan so that they're in reserve.
Karen, you're saying that this is not something that's going to happen right away? It could be five years, five, six-
Could be five years. We have the ability to set aside money for 10 years. And over 10 years, we're certainly going to have to put money in univents.
It's not going to make a whole lot of sense for us to spend that kind of money on roofs if the building is going to be taken down.
That's correct. So this, but we are also, if we were to pass a, you know, a bond right now, we've got five or six years before we're able to have a new school, a facility. So there will have to be some repairs there done in that. Just like we're having to repair the middle school now.
Just because it sometimes has come up in meetings and we didn't say it tonight and I know, but we've talked about it as the tennis courts. I just don't want people to think we aren't talking about those.
We've talked about it. We have a, we have a couple of funds, pockets where we set up. So the O33, which is the PI fund, is like, we're committed. Those monies can't be moved back into the general fund. So that's where we're looking at what would be done in that, in that funding. So that's like, when it's decided that that's the right position for that, or we can fix what we've got, then that's, it'd be in the O3, O03 is what we're planning on that.
So this is not exhaustive, like-
No.
Because-
Our exhausted list-
There are other things that I've experienced, like the parking lot at Lindsay is not on there, but-
We are looking at the parking lot. For Lindsay's parking lot, that's slated for PI funds for next year. We are looking at a two-inch ground and then come back and put that in. The high school parking lot, we have estimates for the high school parking lot. It is, since we're doing so much construction and we have a water treatment plant, we probably shouldn't do it this year. We're going to have to wait next year because we have heavy machinery coming in. And then Westwood's parking lot, which has a drainage issue, is a bigger project to understand. And it may be that it has to come back over here. It's just one that we don't have, we don't have solid estimates for right now because of the drainage issue and how big that retainage, because we have to put a retainage pond in. And where would that go at Westwood is more of the question. So those are, certainly Mark is working on those, he's got some estimates on those. But Lindsay's slated for this to be redone because I know it's had the, I think it's around 200,000. I believe it's around 200,000. So that one is first step, then high school, then Westwood. And this one will, is in good shape. Okay?
So just to reemphasize, what you're showing us tonight is just the projects that we sort of haven't seen or talked about before and how this additional money would be spent potentially in the future. And you're just asking us to set aside the money to be able to do these sort of extra projects. And some of the other things that have just come up are things that we've been talking about that would be funded out of different pockets of funding.
Yeah, and, and again, the PI fund, we, we had a PI levy that's been moved in, back into the general fund. So we have 600,000 going into that from the, from the levy. And then we'll transfer money from the general fund. You'll see, well, you could have seen.
I didn't do it.
Yeah, there's a big transfer, there was a big transfer over here and then there's some smaller transfers here. That'll go back into the PI levy. And then what we'll see is, those are committed. So I don't, we don't, we move those when, you know, here's the summer project list. We've got bids, here it is, we'll move that money over. That's okay. All right. And I think we're looking at next year about one and a half million and then 2 million after that. And then one of the things that we did as well, because we had so many lovely retirees, we had a severance pay. So we've moved $1.3 million into a severance plan that we are funding because those will be paid out over five years. So that's what we're doing. And we've already made that transfer, you made that transfer last month. And then going forward, we have some bubbles in our retirees. They kind of all were hired at one time, apparently. And so we'll need to prepare for those. So that's just a little transfer. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you, Karen. Again, you've demonstrated that our finances are being well-watched. And I might also point out that we just got another comment from the state auditor as far as the quality of the school district's finances. It just came out, what was it, like a week or two ago? 17 different criteria that they looked at?
Yes.
You want, could you make just a couple of brief comments about where we ended up on that?
Yeah, I think out of the, we, it's, it's a new report that the auditor of state is, is looking at to, really to test the strength of a district, whether they would have a fiscal emergency. And so they look at 24, 25 different indicators. And we had, all of our indicators were positive or, except for one. And one was related to our cash balance going down or our property taxes going down. And that's partly because we had, the board had suspended a levy. So that wasn't really something that we could, you know, wasn't a bad thing. So as we look at those indicators, they're all positive. I mean, I think we had a couple of, they do it in red, green and yellow. And the yellows were, you know, your property tax went down and it implicated a couple of other ones, but all very positive. We're in a very good financial position. But they really implemented this because there are some districts that are having, struggling. Their smaller districts are struggling, they're trying to, it was interesting, they came out at that time when they're getting ready for the biennial budget and just how many districts might have some issues if this passed. And so this is really looking at 2024. It'd be interesting to what happens in 2025 as we look at it.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board for Karen on this? Great. Okay, next on the agenda is the public remarks, but there was no one that had signed up. So I guess we will move on to the routine items.
Okay. Resolution 151 to approve warrants for 20, April 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Resolution 152 to approve student activity statements of purpose and budget for the 2025-2026 school year. So this is next year.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Resolution 153 to accept the donations. We have three donations, one from Mr. Forrest's estate, Patterson Farms. estate, Patterson Farms, and CFA Charity Aid Foundations of America.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Levmore?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Resolution 154 to approve a then-and-now certificate.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levmore?
Yes.
Resolution 155 to authorize a transfer of the First Capital Projects Fund, USAS 070, establishing a Second Capital Projects Fund, and authorizing a transfer there, too. And the resolution has been attached.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levmore?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Resolution 156 to accept the increases and decreases in the 2025 appropriations. This will take care of the transfer that we have.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levmore?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Resolution 157 to approve the five-year forecast update.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Levmore?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Resolution 158 to approve the 070 capital plan. So what we're looking at is the First Capital Plan, the Middle School Capital Plan with the adjustments that we made for the univents, and then the Second Capital Plan, we'd like you to go ahead and approve that. As a capital plan, it's board-approved. Doesn't mean you can't change it, but I'd like to see it, you know, come through.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Just to confirm again, though, because there were some things on there that probably want to discuss further.
Oh, absolutely. And, you know, the board has final decision when you go, when we have the bids back, and then when we have a contract in place, we'll, you know, you'll authorize the bid for something going out, and then you'll come back when we have a contract. So you have a couple of bites at the apple before we make any final decisions.
Call the roll, please.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levmore?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Resolution 160 is to approve a manager's contract recommendation.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levmore?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Resolution 161 is to accept an administrative staff resignation. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levmore?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Resolution 162 is to approve administrative appointments for the 2025-2026 school year. If the board puts the resolution on the table, once we have the resolution enacted, I will have Amy and Megan introduce these people to you.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Amy, Megan, would you like to introduce the individuals who are here tonight? Thank you. Don't fight. Just turn.
It gives me great pleasure to introduce you to Jennifer Norman, our candidate for the Director of People Personnel. Jen comes to us with a wealth of experience. She started her career in Mentor in Mayfield, then went to Riverside, and finally ended in Rocky River, where she is their People Services Director. She has been a principal. She's been an intervention specialist. I think one of my favorite moments when we were interviewing Jen was, we asked a question that could have been answered with a lot of jargon, and she started, and then she said, you know, "I really make a priority to put the kids first," and just to kind of put us in our places. And that was all it took. I mean, truly, her expertise is immense. She brings a wealth of knowledge, and she even knows EMIS as a huge bonus. You would never think that would be a real, I know, she couldn't believe it, that we were so attracted to the EMIS part of it.
Well, you.
Exactly. But truly, her commitment to students with special needs is exceptional, and we're very lucky to have her consider working here.
Okay.
Thank you. You want to introduce Kevin as well?
I will.
Okay.
Would you come up and join us, please?
I do that, I mean this.
And you got the job anyway.
So I like, it gives me also great pleasure to introduce you to Kevin Kimmelhar. These two have become fast friends behind me, which is wonderful, since they've been working together. Kevin comes to us from Kenton and then Beechwood, where he is a school psychologist and has his own private practice. His kindness, his knowledge of our students and their needs, and what he brings to the table in terms of expertise is truly unparalleled, and we are delighted, again, to have him consider coming to West Yaga. He is joined by his wife, Julie. Yes, tonight, so we're hoping to welcome him to West Yaga as well.
This is the second time I've had the privilege of recommending Kevin to a Board of Education for Hire. So you're leaving and he's coming? Yes. That, that goes against what I said earlier, but what can I say? Okay, Megan, you're on.
Keep it going.
All right.
Well. Okay, I'd like to introduce you to Samantha Prince. She is recommended to be Lindsay's new principal. She comes to us from Cleveland Municipal Schools, where she is the principal of a pre-K8 building, God bless, at Mary Church Terrell School, where she was formerly the assistant principal, and then worked her way up to the principal position. Former to that, she was at Stepstones Academy, where she was a classroom teacher in elementary, and then she also was the dean of students. So we are thrilled to welcome her and to introduce her.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all for being interested in joining us in this school district. I guess, any questions or discussion?
No.
Call the roll, please.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levmore?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Resolution 163 is to approve additional per diem days for administrative staff. Per diem days sounds redundant, a per diem rate. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levmore?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Resolution 164 is to accept certified staff retirements listed.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? We have a lot of years. We do. Which we already saw, I guess, when we handed out the. Correct. Things earlier. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levmore?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Congratulations to the retirees.
Yes. Now you can retire. Resolution 165 is to accept a certified staff resignation.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Levmore?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Several in attendance tonight relate to this next resolution, so I'm going to ask the board again to place the resolution before, before the board, and then I would ask that our principals, Megan, Amy, and Ryan, introduce the people who will be assigned to their respective buildings. So, Resolution 166 is to approve certified staff appointments for the 2025-2026 school year.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Okay. I don't know who's going first. We'll go alphabetically. May, Amy. Got messed up there.
I'd like to introduce you to Allison Palvo. Allison, you don't know this, but I've been hearing about you for years. Allison is a paraprofessional in the county program at the high school. And Allison has a reputation for just really dedicating herself to our students with some of the most intensive needs. She works long hours. She loves the work she does, but everyone has always said, boy, I wish, I wish she could be a teacher. I wish we could just hire her. I wish, I wish. Okay, well, Allison went back and got her intervention specialist license, and so we are able indeed to hire her. And we are absolutely thrilled to have her join us at Westwood Elementary.
Thank you. Thank you. Megan?
And Sapporo.
Sapporo.
She's joined by her husband, Dan, so we're sorry, who are so well behaved.
They had a lot of questions with the forecast. I'm very excited. They were nodding.
And I have the pleasure to introduce two new ELA teachers, which this is super exciting to have be offering two opportunities at our middle school. So the first one we'll start with is Megan Debacker. She comes to us, as she is currently in fourth and fifth grade at All Saints in Wicklitz, teaching. She comes to us with a Bachelor's of Science in Education, in Middle School Education, and she also has a minor in mild to moderate special education, which kind of sets her apart in this. So we are excited to welcome you. And her primary role will be serving our sixth-grade students, which will be very exciting to have them. And then we also have Emma Smallwood. She comes to us, she has a 712 ELA license. She has her experience in Orange High School, where she was a student teaching, and then now she's working at Heritage Middle School. So we are excited to welcome her on to our scene as well.
Thank you.
Ask my people.
So two of the retirees you saw tonight. We get to welcome two new teachers into the high school, hopefully. Our first is Jessica. She's coming to us from Garfield City Schools. So Jessica has done a plethora of activities, besides being an English teacher there, NHS advisor, class advisor. Funny story about Jessica. Actually, when I was doing a reference check, it was difficult to get ahold of one of her administrators, and then when I finally did, his response was, when I identified myself, was, "I'm not sure why you are calling right now, and you haven't already hired her." So, very nice. Monica will be coming to us from a brief stint in Twinsburg, and then, let's look at my.
Archbishop.
Archbishop Hoben, yes. Monica, we work in our science department, does chemistry, physical science, biology. And then, fun fact about Monica, her students may not have to look too far to find her on the weekends if they need to go see her, because she is also a practicing physician.
Wow.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So there's our slate. Okay. Impressive bunch. Yes, they are. So, would you call the roll, please?
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levmore?
Yes.
This next resolution is one of the more important resolutions that a board considers, because in this resolution, the board is asked to award continuing contract status to certified staff members. The thing that's powerful about this is that when we first have teachers arrive, we need to determine whether or not they're a fit for us and we're a fit for them. These people have proven over the course of several years that they are a fit for West G. So they've been recommended to you. You've seen their accomplishments and their resumes. So I'm pleased to present to you tonight in Resolution 167, a resolution to award continuing contract status to the certified staff members, with the conclusion of the 24-25 school year, and those certified staff members are listed in the resolution.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levmore?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
And thank you, folks, for joining us and wanting to be a part of our district as well. Yeah, stand up. Let's take a look at you. We've seen you for a long time, but. There they are. Thank you for coming. Resolution 168 is a resolution to approve certified limited contracts for the 2025-2026 school year, and they're listed.
So moved. Second.
Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levmore?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Resolution 169 is to approve additional per diem rates for certified staff in the 2024-2025 school year, as listed.
So moved. Second.
Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Levmore?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Resolution 170 is to approve certified stipends for work outside the 2024-2025 contractual year. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levmore?
Yes.
Resolution 171 is to approve 2025 summer programming stipends.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levmore?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Resolution 172 is to approve classified staff appointments for the 2024-2025 school year. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levmore?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
I did not see Josephine Ward. Is Beverly here tonight or not? Just so we could recognize her. I don't know. No, Josephine's not, I know, but I didn't know if Beverly was. Didn't want to snub anybody, leave anyone out. Resolution 173.
Especially after they.
I know. After waiting all that time, it's like an endurance contest. Resolution 173 is to approve a change in classified staff contracts for the 2024-2025 school year. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Levmore?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Resolution 174 is to approve classified stipend. This is for work outside of the 2024-2025 contractual year.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levmore?
Yes.
Resolution 175 is to accept classified staff retirements. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Levmore?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Resolution 176 is to accept classified staff resignations for the 2024-2025 school year.
So move. Second. Any discussion? Call the roll please.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Resolution 177 is to approve classified staff appointments for the 2025-2026 school year.
So move, second.
Any discussion? Call the roll please.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Resolution 178 is to approve classified probationary contracts for the 2025-2026 school year.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll please.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Resolution 179 is to approve classified limited contracts for the 2025-2026 school year.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll please.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Resolution 180 is to approve service contracts for the 2024-2025 school year.
So move.
Second. Any discussion? Call the roll please.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Resolution 181 is to approve unpaid days for those listed.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll please.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Resolution 182 is to approve an unpaid day for the 2025-2026 school year.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll please.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Resolution 183 is to approve a student internship student teaching placement for the 2025-2026 school year.
So move.
Second. Any discussion? Call the roll please.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
As an interesting side note, Jordan Levine was one of my students in my previous district. Resolution 184 is a resolution to approve the second and final reading of Revised Policy 2280.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Preschool program.
Call the roll please.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Resolution 185 is to approve the second and final reading of the revised board policies listed.
Second. Any discussion? Call the roll please.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Resolution 186 is to approve the Always Construction LLC quote for the purchase of sidewalks.
So move.
Second. Any discussion?
These sidewalks are at Lindsay, Westwood, and the middle schools, is that correct, Scott? In the high school.
And we got bids?
We have, this is a state contract.
Okay.
So they'll do a bi-square footage now. If we do other sidewalks, we'll have to take out a bid.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Call the roll please.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Resolution 187 is to approve the service agreement between McKean Education Group, West Jago Local Schools for the 2025-2026 school year.
So move, second.
Just point out that this is in relationship to work being done at St. Anselms. Yeah, it's a pass-through thing for us. Do you call the roll please?
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Resolution 188 is a resolution to approve again the service agreement between McKean Education Group and West Jago Local Schools for the 2025-2026 school year.
So move, second.
And again, it's the same type of pass-through setting for St. Anselms. Any other discussion? Call the roll please.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Resolution 189 is to approve the customer agreement between School Lytics and West Jago Local Schools for the 2025-2026 school year.
So move, second.
Any discussion? Call the roll please.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Resolution 190 is to approve the service agreement between Education Alternatives and West Jago Local Schools for the 25-26 school year.
So move, second.
Any discussion? Call the roll please.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Resolution 191 is to approve the student transportation agreement between Education Alternatives and West Jago Local Schools for the 2025-2026 school year.
Second.
Which particular is student transportation is?
These are special ed related transportation.
Okay, yep. Call the roll please.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Resolution 192 is to approve the school district placement contract between the Wings of Change Therapy Incorporated and West Jago Local Schools for the 2025-2026 school year.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll please.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Resolution 193 is a resolution to declare emergency circumstances to purchase the replacement of the high school main entrance doors in the 2024-2025 school years. This is an immediate concern obviously, or wouldn't be put on in this form.
So move.
Second.
Yeah, so it's an emergency.
One of the doors fell off.
That's what I figured. I was like, something must have happened.
It's pretty much an emergency.
So it's already been replaced, I mean.
Well, it's in the process of being repaired because the door is.
Alright.
It has been.
It is.
Fixed, but it won't open.
Yeah, it's permanently closed.
Doesn't work like a door.
Not a good situation, yeah, one of the main ones. There are other doors that.
Any other discussion? Call the roll please.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Can they get out if they need to?
They can get out if they need to.
Good.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Resolution 194 is to approve the Schiffler Equipment Sales Incorporated pre-K furniture quote through the TIPS Purchasing Consortium. This is for the.
Second.
Any other questions, discussion? Call the roll please.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Resolution 194A is a resolution to approve the Schiffler Equipment Sales Incorporated pre-K playground quote through the TIPS Purchasing Consortium.
Second.
And this TIPS Purchasing Consortium is a way that we get lower prices.
It's not a state consortium, but it is a consortium.
It's a consortium that we joined, and then they have, they go out and send out bids just like we would, but they do it on nationwide basis. And Ohio is a state that participates in it.
And these amounts are pretty close to what we, if I remember right, I mean, when we first talked about moving it away from Metzenbaum to here.
Yeah, we estimated, we put aside $150,000 and we still have some additional equipment we probably will need, but this'll. These are the ones that take eight weeks to get here.
Okay, any other discussion? Call the roll please.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Resolution 195 is to rescind the award of bid for the 2024 public water well installation with HAD incorporated.
So move.
Second.
What is this about?
This is sort of a belt and suspenders resolution because the well has been moved, the site has been moved, and this contract that was in place has already expired. We just thought that it would be better to dot the i by having the board acknowledge the expiration of that contract.
Okay.
This was the original bid on that contract, and so it, they only had 30 days to initiate the contract.
Any other discussion? Call the roll please.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Resolution 196 is to establish expense reimbursement rates.
So move.
Second. And Karen, this is an adjustment to make it the GSA rate rather than us fixing a number and then having to go back and changing it.
Correct. So in March, you approved the final, an update to the travel policy. As part of that policy, you are to annually update the whatever rate you would like to have, so this will get us up to date for this year. And then every January, as part of our organizational meeting, we'll update the rates to the new GSA rates. We have been.
What was the last one we had? It was.
Forty dollars has been our rate for, I think the last time policy was changed in 1999. So we limited everyone's amount to forty dollars. So this will allow us by where they're, you know, if they're going to Columbus, or if they're going to Kansas City or something, it'll be able to adjust that to a more reasonable reimbursable rate, because what we're seeing is people are exceeding the forty dollars for three meals a day, obviously.
And that number is also adjusted by location that they're going to be at, right?
It will.
Rather than a flat number.
So each city, major metropolitan area has a different rate, and then it'll adjust it if you're traveling that day or coming home that day, and we'll just have an amount there.
So we're going to limit our travel to small Midwestern towns? Just kidding.
We'll let you go to Warren, okay?
Thanks.
I can remember that they, the board would not let anybody go past the Mason-Dixon line or past the Mississippi River, you know, I mean, it was just crazy that we couldn't. You couldn't go to a national conference, you couldn't go to.
If you had to fly.
Went outside of a certain area.
Yeah, if I recall correctly, some of our staff had a road trip instead of flying to save money when it was first here.
And it was awful. I was there.
I believe in someone, I believe Megan's car sick, so she got shotgun. So this will allow the superintendent to determine airlines if we get those, and, you know, we have an airline flight or something like that. So it gives flexibility in air travel. We don't spend a lot of money on travel whatsoever, but it allows us for those conferences.
It's good to have a consistent place.
Yeah.
Competitive.
Everybody, it's very competitive and it will cover the cost of people who have to travel.
Right.
We're asking them to do this, so we should cover their cost.
Okay, any other discussion? Call the roll please.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Resolution 197 is to determine that Chromebooks used by the class of 2025 are deemed obsolete or equal to a nominal fair market value. This permits our students to either keep the Chromebooks or to turn them back into us.
So move.
Second.
Any other discussion? Call the roll please.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Okay, I guess the next item on the agenda is discussion of new business and then also suggestions to be included on future agenda. We have one item here to discuss, and that is whether, not to decide on tonight, but to discuss whether we want to join the Vouchers Hurt Ohio Organization, which is a large number of school districts now, do you remember how many, Kathy?
No.
But that are contending that the way that vouchers are being handled now violates state law, the Constitution, and the Supreme Court decisions. So they are gathering schools to join in the lawsuit. So that's, that's it in a nutshell. And the question is whether or not we want to join that lawsuit, support against the vouchers and how they are affecting the public schools. Are there any questions or comments that anybody would like to make at this point? Again, we're not making a decision tonight.
No, I just think, I mean, from my standpoint, I'm just gonna do a little research. I'd like to see both sides.
Yeah.
Like to, you know, look at both arguments.
Kathy, you got any comments?
No, I don't know. As I've said before, that the, there are schools that don't even have, there are, I don't know what the number of districts, but it's, it's the majority of districts that are being taxed to pay for vouchers, and they don't even have a, either a charter school or a school that can be used for money. So I, I think we need to look into it a little further, but I, but I think it's not, as we've discussed before, it's not directly impacting us in any significant way, but that doesn't mean that we shouldn't be cognizant of what's happening at the state level. And, I mean, the things that they're talking about of taking away, Karen had a great presentation, but taking away property taxes and going to income tax. So there's a lot happening at the state level that I think we need to be on top of, taking maybe some steps.
Stand.
With our fellow school boards, systems throughout the state.
I'd also like to know how it would, it is affecting, it's not now supposedly affecting our district, but how it could in the future. I am definitely a person that is on the fence with this issue, and I really do need to see both sides, and I have not researched it, and usually I am a researcher. So I need to really understand the whole issue.
Okay. I think we've gotten information, at least an email from one side.
Yeah, I've seen that, yeah.
Plenty of emails.
I would like to, I would like to hear from maybe one of our reps or something too as to if the vouchers went away, what does it mean to us? I mean, I know we say on paper that that means the money would come, I just don't know how that, mechanics of that work. I'd like to learn more about that and find out what Columbus is thinking here, if they are.
I mean, the money that's being, being taken away from public schools to pay for, and apparently, and if we can get that, we've seen that information, but bring it forward, that there are more and more people who are, who are paying for their students' education and have paid for it, but they're taking advantage of the vouchers, and they don't necessarily need it, whereas the people who are in need of, which is what this was formed to take care of, are not taking advantage or cannot take advantage because they, they can't afford, even with the voucher.
I understand, yeah.
To pay for the private school or the parochial school.
I think what we've seen is that vouchers are commonly used now, as Kathy said, by families that in the past paid tuition to private schools, and now they're being reimbursed by the state. How that directly affects us, I would leave to Karen to be able to define. Is it actually a dollar for dollar? Is there, there's not a corresponding loss for this district?
No, I mean, as we look at those, it's just less dollars that will be allocated to public schools to fund our Fair School Funding Plan, and that's what we're seeing is the second, you know, the third phase of that Fair Schools Funding Plan has been put on hold, and we're seeing a larger percentage going to vouchers. So there's only so many dollars in the state, and they're concerned about what goes to, to, you know, to education, and so they're leaning towards more voucher dollars instead of funding public schools. So that's, it's not an immediate dollar for dollar for us because we are still on the guarantee, but you're now seeing that implication of the guarantee being impacted along with, you know, we provide. When we look at our vouchers, the number of vouchers that we had two years ago, you know, we were looking at 33 vouchers, 33 families taking those vouchers. Now we have over 300 of those families. Now, we haven't lost 300 kids, but we're seeing, as Dr. Markward said, those families take, being reimbursed, Now we have over 300 of those families. Now, we haven't lost 300 kids, but we're seeing, as Dr. Markward said, those families take, being reimbursed, or the schools being reimbursed through the voucher program that normally would not have qualified before we had the expanded voucher. So that expansion of the vouchers is what we're seeing, not the old voucher system where you were looking at a failing school district or you're looking at a poverty-based. They also increased the poverty base to 450% of poverty, which before was 150% of poverty rate. So more and more people are qualifying and applying for those, as we see those school districts asking them to do their applications.
Those are the things I'd like to have a better understanding of, and, I mean, and people getting vouchers are paying taxes too, so.
Absolutely, I know. We're just seeing, you know, a philosophical shift.
Right.
In, in what they're prioritizing.
I'm on the fence.
That's why we wanted to bring this two years of discussion topic prior to taking a position on this.
Yeah, it's worthy of looking into.
Look at is, is the, how this has escalated over time. I mean, what, what amount of money over the years has, has been set aside for vouchers, what the state has budgeted? And I don't know what that is, but my, my guess is that it's, it's gone up considerably over time, which means that whether we're, whether we're having voucher issues right here, money is being taken out of something, money that should come to public schools in general and should be coming to us, and we know that that's been a problem, an escalating problem, that the state has not, not seen fit to even fund schools as.
Well, I think this was designed originally to provide people, I'm thinking of inner-city schools where some of the kids can't even read, and so they wanted an opportunity to, you know, give parents an opportunity to go somewhere else. No, I agree, I think it's kind of blown.
Yeah.
But I, again, I gotta look at, I gotta look at a lot more, but it's, I, I do think it's worthy of looking at and looking into.
So then, do we want to have this on at the next meeting as a discussion topic again?
I think that's probably a wise idea because Karen and I can assemble quite a bit of information for the board to, to review in advance of that meeting, and then I think another meeting for discussion before we know what direction you'd like us to proceed.
We have two.
Maybe the 23rd makes more sense than the first one.
Yeah, we have the ninth and the 23rd.
Huh?
Yeah, we have two in June.
Yeah, because one's like the sixth. I don't know.
Ninth, one's June 9th, and then later in the month.
I don't know. I'm open.
Which one are you missing, Kathy?
I'm missing the ninth. It's the ninth and the ninth.
Move it to the 20th, move it to the next one. Yeah. Okay. Superintendent, have any report?
Yeah, this is the end of the year, obviously, there's a lot happening. You can tell we've been doing a lot of interviewing, and some people have been spending quite a bit of time here. The days have been long, not just from the, as this, as this agenda indicates. But toward the end of the year, if you wanted to go to an activity in this school district, you know, right now is the time to do it. If you notice the parking lot tonight, you can see it's pretty full. There are several events that conflict, and we really can't help that because there are so many at the end of the year. But two dates that you really should remember, one is Wednesday, May 21st, it's the last day for our seniors, they'll be exiting our doors, and then Senior Awards Night is Wednesday, May 21st as well. And then the big culminating activity for the year is commencement, and the commencement ceremony is Thursday, May 29th, it's at 6:00 PM. And this year, because of the uncertainties of the timing with the installation of the turf, we wanted to move it indoors, so it is at the Manner Fine Arts Center. So I wanted you to keep those two dates in mind, the 21st and the 29th. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you know what time the senior awards are?
Let me see, I'm supposed to be there, so let me look.
Six thirty.
Six thirty?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Ryan just said six thirty.
Well, he doesn't know. It's at six thirty. He's right. You're here to make me look good, Ryan, don't be acting smart.
Graduation start?
Six, now you're asking all these questions.
Six PM.
Six o'clock, yeah. I said that when you weren't listening.
Right in here.
Six o'clock for graduation.
Okay, anything that the board wants to mention, board reports? Okay, next board meeting, regular board meeting, is Monday, June 9th, at 7:00 PM, here in the Board Office Community Room. Community Room.
Oh, we don't have the appointment of, on no joint rec.
Oh.
It's not on the agenda. We'll do it on the night. We'll do it on the night. All right. I didn't have, you appointed, I forget your name, I'm sorry, Mr. Vidmar to the joint rec. We had the meeting, and we, the board needs to take action to formally appoint him to the, to the joint rec board.
So he's sat here the whole night. I feel for you, my brother.
Can we make a resolution?
You can make a resolution.